President Smith, I believe that one of her staff members will be sharing their doing the slides. Let me just, hi, are you here?
Yeah, I'm in now. Yeah, I wasn't let in before, so I just got in. So, good evening, everyone. So nice to see smiling faces and some new faces. It's been a while since we've been together. And just really happy that I can bring some members of my team together to give you an update of what's going on with the Laurel Medical Center Health and Wellness Campus. For those of you who do not know me, I'm Dr. Trudy Hall. I am a rehab physician by training. I've been a physician executive for 15 years, and I've been part of formerly Dimensions, now U M Cap Region for the last nine years, and have been site executive for the Laurel Health and Wellness Campus. We do have some slides. Are we able to show the slides?
You should be able to. Is it going to be?
Janay, are you on? Did Janay send you the slides ahead of time?
She did.
Okay, if you could pull them up for me.
Online, I'm at.
No problem. So while we're waiting, it has been a crazy two years with the pandemic. We all know it's actually April 20th will be exactly two years when we had to reactivate the Laurel beds that were closed and decommissioned for, to answer the call to the state for the need for COVID care. At that time, we were in the beginning of the pandemic. Things were totally out of control. And when we looked at our plan for the ability of hospitals to handle the surge for this very infectious disease, it was figured out that we needed some extra beds to have that focused COVID care. We have cared for, and I'll talk about a little bit later on the presentation, we've cared for over 3,000 residents of the state of Maryland. We have saved thousands of lives, and we have definitely have Laurel has been the footprint that everyone around the state who had a COVID patient knew Laurel, knew Laurel Medical Center and knew Laurel, Maryland real quickly as they were looking for a place to place their patients. So again, thank you for allowing me to come and answer some questions as well as update some of your new council members on, on the, what's going on in the Laurel campus. Next slide, please. So today I've brought with me Dr. Kerry Lewis. He is the chairman of our OBGYN department as well as director of our maternal fetal meth and women's health at U M Cap. And then also we have Anthony Lampasona, who has been the president of our off-campus development right here from Catalyst. And he will also be bringing you an update of where we are with our, our campus development with our master developer. Next slide.
Just really quickly, Dr. Lewis and Anthony, they are on standby. They cannot be heard. So is there any way we can advance their role so that they will be able to share insights into the presentation?
Okay, could you give me the other person's name, please?
Kerry Lewis.
Okay. With the K, K E R R Y. And then the other person is Anthony Lampasona.
Okay, I believe my assistant Kenya is going to be admitting them now.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I'll chat with you guys offline as well.
Okay, thank you so much. So pretty much to give an overview, not only the Laurel campus, but what else is going on with U M Cap, Dr. Lewis will focus on women's health services and all the amazing things and the growth that we've had in that service line for services for our Laurel Belsville community. And then Anthony will follow up with where we are with our campus development plans. Next slide. Mission and vision, again, to be the provider of choice for our community. Next slide. And this has been pretty much the summary slide of when and why we merged, was taken over by University of Maryland Medical System. It was to improve our access, strengthen our coordination of care and continuum, our ability to invest, which we'll go over the major investment on our Largo campus, and then the investment right here in Laurel with our Laurel freestanding medical facility, and the ability to integrate university teaching and resource, research, research as well as having resources for clinical trials and advanced care for our community. Next slide. So the transition from Laurel Regional Hospital to Laurel Medical Center, that occurred since January of 2019. That's the Health Service and Cost Review Commission, as well as the Maryland Healthcare Commission approved our ability to transition from a full-service hospital to a freestanding medical facility. The next slide will kind of go in a little bit more detail for what, who we are now and what we will be when we move into our new building. Next slide. So we transitioned to continue our 24/7 emergency services, resuscitation and stabilization with four secure psychiatric bays to handle on the behavioral health patients from the community. For behavioral health, we're focused on our outpatient programs with partial hospitalization, intensive outpatient program, and looking to expand to substance abuse. We've had an award-winning wound care center, three years in award with, with the magnet service of excellence in healing wounds. And that wound care center with a partnership with Heal Logic will continue. We also have pharmacy and lab to support those services that are in, in the facility. We have observation beds. And what observation beds are, for patients that need care for 24 or 48 hours, the ability for them to be stabilized in the emergency room and be cared for, for those limited services and stay at the facility. Primarily, we're seeing mostly cardiac patients as well as pulmonary and infections of patients that need less than 24 hours of care. Patients that need more complex care, we've been transferring them to our surrounding hospitals and to our new regional medical center at Largo. Outpatient surgeries, two ORs and two procedure rooms. I'm very happy to say we, with an increased affiliation with the School of Medicine, we have orthopedic surgeons and short replacement care that has really expanded and has accelerated in the last year with us doing more cases and almost really looking at a strong orthopedic service line for our new ORs moving forward. Next slide. And this represents a $50 million investment into the Laurel community for this new state-of-the-art building. Our current hospital, it's over 40 years old. We're holding it together with sticks with the roof every time it rains. But again, it's been an old building and we've been needing to move into a new home. Regarding our emergency care, you know, still reminding the community that we are not closed. We have never closed. We are still open, and we have the School of Medicine board-certified emergency physicians that are caring for our patients and saving lives every day. So needing to continue to remind the community of the care that's close to home. Next slide. Looking at our current campus services and growing, I have a final slide in the end that really gives the bubble of the services that have expanded. We have added another primary care physician onto Dr. Mudabata. She's a family medicine, so she's still seeing children. Dr. Adesina, as well as adults. Dr. Lewis will go into his expanding women's health line. Our lung health program, we were able to add another physician, Dr. Swami, who ironically worked in Laurel 345 in our ICU, ICU care unit, and he has now joined us to provide and expand our lung health program. Chronic pain management and rehab program, Dr. Reese continues to see patients, as well as expanding on our thoracic care and vascular care. And for the wound care, Dr. Hayward continues to be the medical director. And we've just added on another vascular surgeon, Dr. Daley, onto the service to provide care for this community at the Wound Care Center. Next slide. And on June 12th, we left the, our old home in Chevrolet at Prince George's Hospital and moved into our new home, which is in Largo. Like every new building, we're working through the cricks and crannies of a new building and the new service and the community that we're providing. But again, really, the staff and the community has been very excited regarding our, our new hospital and facility. We do have to admit, there was almost a 30% increase in emergency department visits within the first couple of months. That almost overwhelmed us in that, you know, we knew there was going to be an increase, but really staying up to the demand of the community and meeting the needs while we were unfortunately still in the middle of the crisis. But again, the services are growing. We're adding new services there, and continuing to work to advance and the training and the efficiencies of our staff in our new home. Next slide. When we bring it back away from the buildings and bring it back to the patients and the community, we have to be there to service the community and really handle the major top disease conditions. Heart disease with our Heart and Vascular Institute. Again, cardiac disease and sudden death is at a high specificity, as well as at a high number when we look at our population, and really is on the top of the list of a disease condition that we have to work, educate, control, manage, and, and treat. We continue to do cardiac surgeries with Dr. Jamie Brown, who has pretty much the, some of the highest quality scores nationwide, and that's care close to home right here in Prince George's County. Cancer, again, early screening, early detection, and evidence-based treatments continues to be a focus. I will have the slide where I will show, and if it has not been heard about, the new cancer center, that we have been approved funding and support from the state to help build right here in Prince George's County. Stroke, we continue to be a joint commission, standard of excellence of care for early stroke care and detection right here at Prince George's and now in Largo for the last three years. And then hypertension along goes with cardiovascular disease. How do we actually work with our community on those social determinants of health and try to decrease those disease processes? Next slide. So this rolls straight into my slide on the new cancer center. We have already started clearing the dirt, and I think it's anticipated approximately two and a half to three years, the new cancer center will be opened adjacent to the new regional medical center. Next slide. So women's health, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Lewis. I know he has Dr. Stitt, who is also on standby for introduction, but really to go over the exciting, and I'm so excited because we've been trying to grow this women's health service line for our community for the longest time, and we've recruited some amazing physicians and are starting to do some really amazing procedures right here, already started here in the Laurel Belsville community at the Laurel Medical Center. Dr. Lewis?
Great. Thank you very much. And I just want to echo what Dr. Hall just mentioned. When I first started here about six years ago, the first meeting Dr. Hall and I had was about our desire and her specific desire and advocacy for making sure that we had a comprehensive women's service program throughout Prince George's County with a special attention to the needs of the women in, in the Laurel community, in the city of Laurel. So we have been, I'm glad to say, and it's taken a few years, but we have been very successful in I think building a very comprehensive women's service line from beginning to end to really serve the people of Prince George's County without missing a beat in serving the community in Laurel. So the next slide, please. This slide is really to kind of look at what, what do we, what does it mean to have a comprehensive women's service line? It means that we have general obstetrics and gynecology to be able to address the obstetrical and gynecologic needs of women throughout Prince George's County and Laurel, that we have a special designation of certified nurse men-wives to address the interest in women who are interested in nursing delivery care in their, in their pregnancies. And then we have the subspecialties, and this is what is makes us very unique and I think very powerful in relationship to a comprehensive women's service line. We have maternal fetal medicine that I'm honored to represent as the, the lead division director for maternal fetal medicine, dealing with women with high-risk pregnancies, uro-gynecology and female pelvic medicine and reconstructive surgery. You cannot have a better uro-gynecologist, I think, throughout the entire country than Dr. Brianna Walton, who has been a leader, and we are so blessed and fortunate to have her, her leading us in our uro-gynecology services. And I say the same thing about Dr. Otis Stitt, who leads our minimally invasive gynecologic surgery team, and I think that they're both online, can speak about their, both of their programs very briefly as, as I move forward. And then finally, we have GYN oncology, not as an employee provider, but as a affiliation with University of Maryland Capital Region Health. So we have basically all of the gamut of women's health covered, which we did not have when I first came. So I give credit to Dr. Hall, the leadership for University of Maryland Capital Region Health, and the vision of this organization to really make sure that we did not, in any way, second-rate the care that we provide women in this community. The next slide kind of gives a little bit more detail in terms of those services. Can you go to the next slide, please? What I've highlighted in green, first is general obstetrics and gynecology. The people highlighted in the green are the people that actually work at Laurel. They're actually assigned to Laurel. Dr. Wabosi is basically full-time at Laurel. So we have made sure that the schedule of providers reflects the needs of the Laurel community. They provide the entire gamut of women's health, as far as prenatal care, well-women exams, contraception, menopause, perimenopause, vaginal disorders, etc. So it is comprehensive. Maternal fetal medicine, that this new building at the FMF, and even now, we do provide maternal fetal medicine services. Now, even though we don't do deliveries at the Laurel Medical Center at this time, we do still see high-risk patients who end up delivering here at the, at the medical center. And so those patients need to have access, and we provide them that access by having a presence at Laurel, providing that high-risk pregnancy routine. With uro-gynecology and gynecology that Dr. Stitt and Dr. Walton lead, they're already going there. They're already doing surgeries at Laurel. They're already making themselves accessible to the patients in the Laurel community and throughout Prince George's County. And so I don't want to take their, their thunder for what they describe. I think they're on, and I would like to kind of divert to their discussion of their, the uro-gynecology and pelvic surgery. Are they on?
Yes, we are.
Next slide.
Next slide.
Well, we're joining you from Miami, but we're with you in heart. We're at a very large conference for robotic surgery, which we'll talk about towards the end of our presentation.
But thanks, I want to first say thank you for the opportunity to speak, Dr. Hall, Dr. Lewis, and council members. Thank you for this, for this opportunity to share briefly what we're doing as far as GYN is concerned. So to start off, you know, Dr. Walton and I are GYN subspecialists. We are, Dr. Walton is board-certified in uro-gynecology and certified OB-GYN. And what we bring to the area is a skill set that hasn't been there. We bring the opportunity to offer patients in the Prince George's County area surgeries and opportunities to have procedures done that they did not have before, where they had to travel to other hospitals, Old Cross to mention one, and Arundel Medical Center to mention another one. Now they can have these procedures performed in their community, have their families there to support them while they have their surgeries. Next slide. So these are a couple of milestones that we like to talk about. When we talk about problems that women sometimes suffer from, we talk about heavy bleeding, we talk about menstruation and the difficulties associated with that. Also, it's important to note that women desire pregnancy, and without that, none of us would be here, right? So when we look at the overall experience that women have retaining the menstruation, about 1.67 years of their life they spend pregnant, that's about two kids. The rest of the time, they spend dealing with gynecological problems, and that's what we hear to, to talk about. As you see, when you look at the slide, I think we lost our slide.
Yes, we did. I don't know what happened.
We just lost the slide. Okay, there we go. As, as you look at the overall change in that curve, you see that towards the end, towards midlife, just when you, you see a little peak where these patients tend to come and see us for certain needs, for certain diagnoses, and that's what Dr. Walton and I are here to talk a little bit about.
Yes, where you are, we are mainly concerned about sort of the quality of life as opposed to the reasons why patients might die, which can be fairly impactful in that these problems don't kill you, but they take away your life. And so our focus has really been not just on our technical skills, but to really lend to what the needs are in the community. Next slide.
This is a procedure that, for the first time in the Prince George's community, we performed at Laurel Regional Medical Center. We, I performed this procedure on March 9th. I am one of five GYN specialists in the state that performs this procedure. So we can officially say that we are one of the first in the area to offer this procedure to patients, and we will continue to do so. This is a procedure where patients can come in and have their fibroids taken out. And just as a quick reminder, fibroids are tumors that grow in the womb that cause women pain, heavy menstrual bleeding, and downstream problems with family, with work, with missed days, and they need treatment. And often, women are told that they have to have this procedure called a hysterectomy, which is removing the womb completely. And often when that happens, there's a recovery time that's usually four to six weeks. There's two to three days in the hospital. That's missed time from mom being at home, missed time from work, missed time from the spouse being available to take care of whatever needs need to be taken care of around the home. Whereas with this procedure, we can perform this procedure, treat these fibroids, reduce the amount of bleeding women have, reduce their pain and discomfort, and improve their quality of life, all while offering a procedure that can be performed within an hour. They go home the same day, and the recovery period is four to five days as opposed to four to five weeks. So we performed this procedure on two patients on March 9th. I've talked to them since that time, and they are very satisfied with the outcome and telling friends about it, and we're looking forward to offering this to more patients in the community.
Next slide. So in those cases where the assessed, it's not necessarily the right procedure, some women need more invasive procedures, and we are happy to announce that we have acquired the robotic system for our Largo hospital. Robotics is a special advantage, and for those of you who are not as familiar with robotic surgery, there have been about 10 million procedures performed across the United States. About a third of those are gynecologic in nature. They are, it is really key to our women's health program, and so one of the things that we needed to get and acquire is the system. The system is really unique in that it's not just a tool that we take out of the toolbox. The surgeon maneuvers the arms of the robot, which you can see on the table, above the table, all four arms. It is a computer-assisted movement of the robot. So the, the procedure is not done by the robot, it's done by the surgeon. We also have 3D vision. We also are able to perform major surgery through minor incisions, which is a big deal. But in addition to that, that computer assistance, it's kind of like, you know, driving a Tesla or an electronic car. It gives you some feedback to say, hey, you're getting too close to a structure, or you're, you're about to run into something. This system allows us to have that. We also are planning to train more residents and learners in our space, which that allows us to sort of take over if they are not doing procedure, or if we want to give them additional direction. So this advantage for us to the community is key to delivering the kind of care that we are both very proud of.
So combined, we think that we are now very well-positioned to offer patients, women, men, whoever may need these procedures performed, this opportunity to have their care in Prince George's community and not have to go anywhere and have overall better satisfaction. And, you know, with, when you look at the overall picture and the number of women who have issues, specifically with urinary incontinence and uterine fibroids, the numbers are phenomenal in our community. African-American women tend to have higher numbers of some of these issues. So I think we are perfectly positioned, and we're, we're excited about the opportunity to offer these.
We love what we do, but we're grateful that we have a chance to be able to do this for our community.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Lewis, anything else more? And we probably will have questions at the end from the participants. So, anything else?
Well, I could say, you know, first of all, I just say that, that first, a lot of programs, GYN programs are really dominated by obstetrics, and, and that's what I do primarily with high-risk obstetrics. But one of the things that a lot of programs don't have across the country is a really strong GYN program. And I, I hope you understand from who's listening to Dr. Walton and Dr. Stitt, this is really a unique opportunity for this community to have such powerful people with such powerful resources and such powerful technology to really care for the women of this community, which is going to be a powerful asset to the healthcare of women delivered in the healthcare that we provide for women in this community. So, so yeah, so I, I'm proud to have this team together, and you saw the list of the other names. It's a very comprehensive team, and we lead this team, and I hope you can appreciate the commitment that U M Capital Region Health has made to women's health in Prince George's County.
Thank you so much. Can I have the next slide, please? So before I move on, I know our doctors talked very technical, but what does fibroid care mean to the community? Fibroids can impair fertility. Fibroids can cause pain and discomfort. Fibroids, fibroids can, and bleeding, prolonged bleeding can cause problems with work or life satisfaction. And the work that Dr. Walton does with uro-gynecological, the stress incontinence in our community and the quality of life to be able to handle these problems really is a game changer for women in our community. So I am just so happy of this team and, and, and the surgeries they're providing, they're doing right now. They're at the Laurel Medical Center in our OR, and we're just very happy to provide these services. Next, we'll go on to our other campus development plans. And division of the campus, we know it's a 40-acre campus that's going to be repurposed for health and wellness, not just for inpatient acute care. Next slide. Next slide. So where are we? So this is a rendering of what the building will look like, and things are on target, and we're looking that all of the construction will be done by mid-September of this year. Again, mid-September of this year, we will be done with all of the construction, with the plans to finishing the infrastructure with the technology and move in by the beginning of January of 2023. So again, this is a schematic of our lower level, where we will have our outpatient surgery services, our unregulated clinics. We will have all the clinics that we're talking about. our um unregulated clinics, we will have all the clinics that we're talking about, removing them from the old MOB building into this new state of the art building. And then another exciting thing that we've developed is almost like a timeshare um clinic space. So we have some providers um that are in the community that may have an office elsewhere, but they want to provide services on this campus. Also some wellness providers, we're trying to get some weight loss and some nutrition providers that can have certain days where they have sessions for the community. So this allows us to have, either they could be there for half a day or one day, just to sublease space so that they can offer additional services to our community. Again, it could be a community provider, it could be someone from the School of Medicine, or it could be someone in the um health and wellness space. Next slide. Um, this is an actual picture of the, of the construction. Uh, we're finally uh able to see some outside walls. Next slide. Um, more, um, more actual renderings of the um, of the construction site. Next slide. Um, this is the ED bays, um, looking on the inside. Um, we've talked about the tw- uh 20 private ED bays and the um, the four um behavioral health bays. Um, and believe it or not, a year ago, we had to change some of our door drawings because of what? Because of COVID. So we actually have added four um air exhaust systems, um, or four rooms um that we will be able to accommodate for COVID patients because COVID is not going away. Um, again, we're, you know, on the downtrend for this, at this time, um, you know, um hoping and praying for no more variants. But um we still have to be prepared um for um, for COVID in the future and the ability to handle them in a secure um and an infectious control way in our ED. So again, we've um have up, upgraded four of our rooms to be able to handle um COVID patients if, if the need arises in the future or any other infectious disease that will require isolation. Next slide. Um, this is um, um, inside the 10 ops of observation beds um with a private toilet rooms. Next slide. And um, this is a outside um, uh view of the first floor entrance, um, where you could see ambulatory surgery. Um, again, talking about the sublease clinic space and also we have a clinic room that we um will have for the community to be able to use for any um community groups uh for education and training. Next slide. Um, this is what the inside rendering will be um for um, on the left will be the lower level, um, um, which is going to be for the um surgery center as well as the clinics. Those are other, other drawings, just angles of the first level when you come in. Next slide. Um, and then moving on to our catalyst building, um, I know that Anthony was having a hard time uh getting in. Um, so he's on by phone, so I'm just checking, Anthony, are you on? Anthony? Okay. Um, I do not hear him, so I will move forward. So this is our catalyst building. Um, that will be adjacent to our um FMF. We have a connector that will be connecting um both buildings. Uh, we will have um our radiology and MRI services in the building. Um, so that way we can actually service the patients from the ED. Um, our goal is to break ground by the end of this month. Um, it did take some extra time for some of the permits as well as finalizing on some of our final tenants. Um, and um, Janice says that he's on, but he's having a hard time getting in. So I will continue with his slides until he's able to jump on. Next slide.
Can we unmute, manually unmute um that number 414?
I have asked to um, for him to unmute, however, it's not unmuting. He has to do it. He is allowed to speak though.
Anthony, are you on? Okay, I'll continue to go through his slides until he gets on. So where we are right now, the status of the medical office building, um, all the permits with the exception of a vertical permit has um, um, is uh, is completed and it's due on 4/1, um, or anytime this week. Um, the anchor tenants um are um close to being final, which are the last two weeks. Um, the anchor, one anchor tenant is the School of Medicine. They will have um an orthopedic and vascular center um in um the MOB and we're very excited about that. Um, with focus on joint replacement as well as sports medicine and orthopedic injuries. Um, the construction lender has been on boarded. Um, the 100% occupied one's complete and then more than 50 healthcare specialties under one roof and more than 40 physicians and providers will be under that roof. Then I'll go over a slide to kind of go over some of the other um services that will be um in the MOB. Next slide. And just to remind everyone of the health and wellness campus, the darker blue on the left side is our phase one, um, which is our um, our FMF. And if you can just orient yourself, that's Conti and Van Duzen right there at the corner. Um, there will be the FMF as well as the medical office building. Um, once that is completed, um, we will be able to um demolish on the current Laurel, um, of the old Laurel Medical Center and we can start the green. The green is the um, the greenway and the walking way in the health, um, the health green pasture and uh dog park and have a picture of that. So that's for the community. Um, the orange is the one level um health retail. Um, if you've noticed to the back is the Laurel uh Belsville Senior Center that will be unchanged in the red. And on the right is the um, the old MOB, which is physician condo owned, that will be unchanged. But on the lateral part of the campus, we currently have the freestanding wound care center, which we will move into the FMF and that will be um a site for either two buildings or one extended building for another um healthcare vendor. And then on the back end area, um, once the hospital comes down, that would also be another parcel of land. Most of these are um around, you know, three to four acres that we will also be able to have another um healthcare or wellness vendor to have their um services or build on the back part of the, of the campus. Next slide.
Dr. Hall, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, Anthony. I've been winging it for you until you got on.
I have been listening to you the whole time and couldn't wait to chime in, so I'm so sorry about that. You would think after a thousand Zoom calls during the pandemic, I'd have this thing figured out, so I apologize.
No problem.
Council members, good evening.
Yes, take it from here.
Yeah, good evening, council members, and thanks for having me. Uh, my name is Anthony Lampasona with Catalyst Healthcare. Uh, uh, I'm the chief development officer for the company. We're serving as the master developer of the project and also the developer owner of the medical office building. So Dr. Hall, all I'm going to need is a couple cues on the slides just because I can't see what's up there. But I, I, I was listening to you the entire time and a couple additional points uh that I want, I wanted to make uh to the council were uh, one, we had hoped that we would be under construction by now on the medical office bill, right? So the medical office building is one half of phase one. When I say one half, meaning uh the 10 acres currently under development with the freestanding, with the, with the medical center, uh, the UM medical center and then plus the MOB made up the 10 acres phase one. The medical center, the building is under construction. We had hoped it'd been under construction uh by now when we're the second half of phase one and we're going to start moving dirt, I truly any day now. Would it, uh, some of the items that we're holding up, uh, the medical office building from starting construction, where we are feverishly trying to work to lock down the anchor tenants for the building. So unfortunately, due to the pandemic, groups like US Oncology, like DeVita, um, the anchor tenants slowed down and pumped the brakes on some of their new locations and how quickly they were willing to and uh sign and finalize leases for the building. They're all in progress. They're all at the finish line. We really just need signatures on them at this point. Get them to the lender, the lender will fund, uh, and away we go on the medical office building. So w- within the next week or two, we will be, we will be moving dirt for the medical office building. Uh, we're slightly behind uh the hot, uh, UM, UM's building, which is scheduled to complete, I think Dr. Said, Hall said before, uh, January of 2023. We're tracking more towards March, April, uh, 2023, and then the medical office building will be complete. Um, the good news about the medical office building, even though it's slightly delayed and slightly is a, an exaggeration, but definitely more delay than we would like it to be, but it's about to be there. Um, but the good news about it is we are 100% committed to for space. So, you know, we're wrapping up these leases. Once we sign these leases, 100% of the space in the building will be complete, which means that MOB two on those future phases, um, will be ready to go immediately uh as soon as we can get the hospital down. So in terms of sequencing, uh, the UM's medical center would be complete January of 2023. As soon as UM uh gives us the nod to take down the hospital in first quarter of 2023, we'll take down the hospital and then we'll come in right behind that and start to develop some of those additional inroads, uh, roads, curves, gutters and additional buildings. And what we have learned, uh, being that we're 100% leased on the medical office building or nearing 100% leased, um, once we get these final leases on, is that there's a demand for more medical office space. So in addition to some of the other uses that would go up on the campus, on some of the other, what we, we're labeling districts, is definitely some more medical office space as well. We've had a great surge in demand and momentum in the last couple of months uh with interested parties and we're ready to start building number two uh shortly after that hospital comes down in, in the first quarter of 2023. Um, where are we off to on the next slide, Dr. Hall? If you could just give me a cue.
So um, I'm showing the medical way. Um, you want to talk about medical way? I did talk about the zones already, so if um, we're on the medical way, um, slide.
Gotcha. And if, if I'm picturing it, because I was, uh, I should have been looking at the slides, but I was trying to get the better reception from my phone. Um, we're, we're looking, that's the view of Main Street. That's, that is really the view where uh more medical office space would come in, but uh also combined with retail. And I'm, want to be sensitive to how I say this retail. It is healthcare focused type retail. A dental office, a chiropractor, chiropractic office, a yoga studio with traditional medical office space and clinic space either adjacent or in the same building up, up, you know, on a second floor of those types of buildings. So that medical way, Main Street is ready to be developed right as soon as the hospital would come down. Once we get that nod, once it's no longer needed, that comes down, we start building that Main Street.
Great. Next slide, please. Um, the health and wellness space, the green space?
Oh yeah, so we're talking about the out, we're, we're talking about the outdoor space. So as, as the uh council may remember from previous meetings, part of the overall campus redevelopment was to create some green space in addition to uh developed buildings and parking lots. Uh, we wanted a mixture of, you know, facilities and we know that the redevelopment of the campus in total can support about 250 to 300,000 square feet of overall development of facilities. We also wanted some outdoor spaces and green space because we know for a comprehensive health and wellness campus, that's important. So what you're seeing on that diagram is just some of the ideas conceptually that we have for that green space. Now what will happen um is when that hospital does come down and we start to plan for that Main Street, uh, we have a pretty good idea where it's going to land on the campus. Um, but we, there are definitely some site conditions we're working through now on phase one that may dictate whether the green space slides over a couple of feet this way or that way. Uh, and that's just outdoor space that includes, you know, dog park and an outdoor band, small band shell, uh amenities on the campus that'll bring the community in, not just for healthcare treatment, um, but also as a, as a sense of community, as a third space, I'd call it to go uh for the community to gather. So that's the vision behind that green space and it's important to the overall development of the camp, to have the green space there.
Next slide, please. And this slide just shows the proximity of the office buildings to the green space. Next slide. Um, we have the development of the campus. Um, and actually, um, our CEO Nat Richardson is on and he's uh trying to get and, trying to get uh to enter. Um, could someone let him in? Nat Richardson? Okay, um, if we're unable to do that, we'll just kind of finish up and tie up with the presentation. Um, if you can get in, um, any, and I will answer some questions. Anything else? Um, Tony, you want to, um, Anthony, you want to just uh update us? Um, the last slide is um my slide that just kind of goes over the core programs. Um, is there anything else you want to update the group about? Um, really some of the other potential uses and some of the other um vendors that, uh, healthcare vendors that you're kind of anticipating um to possibly be on the campus?
Yeah, so over the last two to two and a half years, we've had meaningful conversations with um fitness focused. I'll, I'll call them operators who are interested in open facilities on the campus. We've had interest from behavioral health uh operators, we, from post-acute rehab operators. We've had a lot of meaningful conversations. Because of the pandemic, I'm not blaming everything on that, but definitely it impacted things quite a bit. Some of those conversations had slow, have slowed down, uh, not in any sort of worrisome way, just in a, people are being a little bit more ca- a, a little bit more careful about some of the real estate decisions we, they, they're making and how fast they're making them willing to expand and grow. However, we've spoken to enough groups that we know there's going to be demand for those additional phases. What they're, wh- I can't put my finger on it or, or even say to you today what exactly it's going to be because it's definitely to be determined. But it's promising in that there's been a lot of interest and we've had a lot of conversations. And Dr. Hall and her team has gone to a lot of meetings with us as we've uh sort of laid out the project to a lot of third parties. And so, so everything through the health, the lens of healthcare, as we think about uh what these additional districts will be, uh, I have a feeling that by the next time we get together and talk and hopefully a year doesn't go by, by time that next time comes up, uh, we'll have some more uh, uh focused conversations around what, who the users will be that are really leaning in on those additional districts.
Yeah, and I do want to add, since we last met, um, we have um formed our Laurel Community Advisory Council. Uh, we've been meeting with them every quarter. Um, and, and actually chaired by um former Fritz Malls, um, that you all know very well. Um, and we've been really getting some good input from our advisory council on um some of the uses and some direction of, of the campus. So we continue to keep them engaged. We've been having a lot of our community, um, as well as some of our clinical leaders actually talk in that council to be able to discuss um, um, from the community lens as well as from the healthcare lens um of um some directions and some strategy moving forward. Um, just to wrap up, I know you guys have the rest of your meeting. This final, oh, go back to the last slide, sorry. The last slide is a easy slide that kind of gives a bubble to show really where we are with um, with the future and planning of the campus. Um, I went over most of the services that we have now, our current core clinical programs. We will be adding um, uh, more cancer care as we look at our cancer center opening up in Largo, um, expanding on our cardiac ums, um, coverage with our Heart and Vascular Institute, um, enhancing our primary care and we've talked about women's health and then enhancing our surgery. Um, we can do Pete's dental, um, doing more general surgery and then expanding our orthopedic services. Um, we're looking at future clinical space and programs, um, expanding into neurosciences, um ENT and again to vascular and again continuing with our health and wellness hub in campus. Also, just to update um everyone, um, we have already started pediatric and adolescents PHP in the Laurel Medical Center. Um, those services have started actually uh this month and the plans are those servers will begin and they would roll into um the MOB um to provide an additional lit um, um, care for our pediatric and adolescent population, which this pandemic has really exposed um really the need for those services. Next slide. And that's a partnership um, um, and subleasing currently right now with Hope Systems. Um, looking at um the, um, what is in the MOB, um, we've talked about all of these services. We've already spoken about dialysis. Um, we're excited we will have pharmacy services. Laurel Pharmacy will be moving into that building, also a community pain management practice. Another OB-GYN practice will be moving into that um building. And then we have some integrative wellness providers, um acupuncture, um herbal therapy, um Ricky therapy. Um, even someone's moving in for natural skin and hair um care, which I'm, I'm excited about the call skin tonics, but they will be also moving into that building. So we have providers who have existing space in um various parts of Laurel that's moving in and then some new, new providers that are coming into that community. And again, the school of medicine footprint um with our orthopedic and vascular services. Next slide.
Yeah, Dr. Hall, what I think is really impressive and a really ga- a, a real gain for the community is that there's 40 new physicians, independent and community physicians and school of medicine physicians coming to the medical office building. And those are 40 physicians who have never been and have never practiced in the community and on that campus before. And that's, it's adding 40 physicians and providers and if not more, um, it's, it's at least 40 and it, and it's definitely more is a huge benefit to the commu- community in providing, you know, better access to care.
Yep. So the biggest thing is we now are coming out of the pandemic, um, really now um pushing forward, marketing campaign, campaigns, letting the community know that Laurel- marketing campaign, campaigns, letting the community know that Laurel Medical Center is still open. Um, we, uh, did vac- uh, vaccinations in partnership with the state. Um, I'm sorry, um, we did, I'm sorry, we did, um, testing because we all know in eight, in, um, December and January, there was really a void of testing in the community. Um, and we were able to have the National Guard to do testing for over a month, um, on the Laurel campus. And it was a drive through and I think it re-exposed a lot of, of the community who had not been on the Laurel campus. They did see the construction and that they knew that something greater was coming, um, and was in the progress. So we were happy that we were able to provide that community service. And, um, and again, um, over the last two years, um, Laurel, Laurel two, four, five. So I don't know if Nat has been able, um, my boss, the CEO of our, uh, cap region, if he's been able to, um, have any voice, Nat, are you able to get on?
Yes, I'm here. Just wanted to say good evening to everyone and thank you for the work that you have been doing, um, across Laurel County and working with us to bring this incredible medical center to the Laurel community. We're looking forward to it. There's a lot of excitement that I have certainly been a part of and, uh, looking forward to just working with our community partners as we move forward.
Right, thank you. So, uh, that's the end of our presentation. Um, just very happy to answer, um, answer any questions, um, from the council. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, any questions from the council?
I got a, not really a question, but, um, first of all, how are you doing, Dr. Hall? Thank you, your team, have a great presentation.
Thanks.
I know this is not going to happen though, but I wish it would, um, since our population is increasing at Laurel. Uh, I wish we had a maternity ward there, you know, people are buying homes here and settling down here and I wish they can deliver their babies here as well. But I know it's not a part of the process, I just want to know that hopefully one day we can have that in our area. So thank you.
Um, uh, I want Dr. Lewis to brag about the beautiful delivery ward that we have at Largo as well as a birthing tub. Um, Dr. Lewis, are you on? It is absolutely beautiful. The mothers have the view of the healing gardens. Um, and guys, um, it's not even fifteen, twenty minutes away. Dr. Lewis, do you want to just tell about the beautiful?
I've been, I'm from California, I've trained in Wisconsin and I've spent some time in the Midwest and I'm now here. I say that only to say that it is truly of all the hospitals that I've been to, the most beautiful labor and delivery unit that I've seen. Um, it is, um, it is designed for patient-centered care. Um, and even one of the rooms does have a, uh, potential for a hydro birth or water, not water birth, but hydrotherapy during labor. Um, and again, as I mentioned before, our nurse midwives are very, very, um, qualified and very, um, well-prepared to be able to introduce that into one of the, um, offers that we have our patients as we move forward. Um, so, so yeah, so that, it, it's a beautiful unit. It really is beautiful.
So we do have the OB-GYNs and the maternal fetal medicine physicians right there on the Laurel campus to see the mothers and make sure they get, um, excellent prenatal and subspecialty care. Um, and then we birth them in the most beautiful ward in Prince George's County or probably the state that's just brand new and, and, uh, and top of the line. So, um, I, I, I think the community should be pleased.
Uh, thank you.
More comments or questions from the council? All right, thank you guys for coming and, um, updating us. Um, looks great and I can't wait to enter the building.
Great, we will have the groundbreaking, uh, for, I mean, with the door opening, um, to turn the key in, uh, in January. So we were looking forward to, um, all of you, um, God willing and pandemic helping to be there for that, um, grand, grand, grandeurous opening. Thank you.
Right, moving on to agenda item B. Traffic study presentation, Director Lee from, uh, Public Works, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Smith, mayor and council members. Uh, I want to set some parameters before we introduce the team. So I'll be very brief and there are, uh, five points that I want to bring forward. Uh, although this study is called a citywide traffic study and we did go through pains to make sure that we covered, uh, all of the hotspots and concerns and areas and neighborhoods of concern. Uh, we believe that this is only a phase in the traffic studies that may have to, uh, come because we did not cover one hundred percent of every street, every set intersection and every parking in the city of Laurel. Some of the, and the reasons behind that are some of the streets are in private communities and thus are maintained and allocated through, uh, HOAs. We also didn't do the newer developments where we did not have, uh, accurate information at this time, such as, uh, the Patax and Greens, the next phase of that, Laurel Overlook, West Side and, uh, what we're working on now, the, uh, Conti Road Extension. And that's because there, the, uh, project is not, uh, started or complete on that particular part of it yet. So with that, uh, said, this is the initial presentation. There are no costs to this presentation, uh, but we will schedule, have scheduled our priorities of implementation, uh, once it's approved along with the CAs and mayor's office. And we don't anticipate, uh, any or much of these costs having to rise to the level of bidding out to where it's going to be council level for council approval. And finally, uh, there will be some recommendations made on, uh, what we feel that can be implemented to mitigate some of the things as the team arises. Uh, I believe I've hit all of the introductory points. If I didn't, then I'm sure Neil or Kristy Fang will let me know. Uh, with that said, I will introduce Neil Robinson from, uh, Century. Neil, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Let, give me a minute, let me share my screen. Um, can everyone see the screen at this time?
Yes, we can see your screen.
Yes, thank you. Okay, again, thanks, Brian, and good evening. My name is Neil Robinson. I'm a traffic engineer with Century Engineering. I'm also an associate vice president, um, with Century. And I'm pleased to present a summary of the citywide traffic and parking study that our team performed on behalf of the city of Laurel, um, starting late last November. Let me first acknowledge the members of the city council and also, um, Mayor Mo for allowing us to present our findings during today's work session. And thanks to Director Lee and his team, especially Ms. Kristy Fang, for their support that they provided throughout the process. So I'll be presenting a broad overview of the study components or approach and preliminary finding and the goal of identifying viable equitable solutions to the traffic operations and safety issues and parking challenges within the city. Joining us in this effort is Orr George Associates, a data collection, um, subconsultant whom we've worked with for many years and whose expertise, um, complements Century's quite well. Together with the DPW and effective coordination from several city and state regional facilities and agencies, we were able to execute the primary study component. The study is divided into two main parts. An assessment of on-street and off-street parking and a traffic speeding and safety assessment. Both are summarized in my presentation today and will be documented in a final report. Throughout the entire process, however, the goals and objectives were clear. Um, to maintain effective coordination with the city, to optimize the city's resources, to identify a meaningful solution for multimodal road users and to recommend a cost-effective solution for possible implementation. Our approach is quite straightforward. We developed a work plan that included field and crash data collection, evaluation and analysis, and preparing recommendations for mitigation. So to start the process, um, the city provided us with what we call a list of hotspots. And so hotspots were provided for on-street parking and also for speeding segments as well as, um, intersection locations, um, which, for whichever were reported issues, safety issues. But we also understood that, um, the on-street parking hotspots, um, there is an interplay between on-street parking and off-street parking. So our study also looked at off-street parking within commercial areas as well as residential areas. So the, the, the flow really was, um, we looked at target areas and times. And this now I'm talking about on-street, um, parking assessment. We looked at older communities, um, that were more densely populated. We also looked at areas that were proximate to some multifamily, um, dwellings and we assessed peak demand periods. Um, so for example, um, for the, the residential areas, um, we looked at a peak demand period which was in the nighttime from twelve fifteen AM to four AM. That's when we conducted our surveys. And then for on-street parking during commercial areas, um, do, within commercial areas, we looked, um, we surveyed the areas, uh, more in the daytime, uh, between twelve PM and four PM. So we had an idea of what are some of the, the causes behind the issues. Um, we know that oftentimes you have spill-over demand onto on-street from, um, private, um, dwellings, multifamily dwellings. Um, there may be code issues where, um, the developers are not required to provide enough parking spaces. Um, there are also parking abuses. So we, we had that in mind as we performed our assessment. And it started with an inventory and usage where we determined the capacity along all of these hotspot segments. And then during the survey periods, um, we actually went out and counted the amount of vehicles there. So we had an idea of the demand. In tandem with that, we also looked at some of the, the parking signage and restrictions and so forth, permit parking in these areas. So kind of fast forwarding, um, to the findings, we identified maybe about nine of the sixteen segments that we had a very high demand when you compare that capacity. And these areas, no surprise to us, were proximate to, um, some of the multifamily units. So it suggested that residents in these multifamily units are spilling over onto residential streets and using up, um, quite a bit of the parking spaces for single-family residents. Um, as far as recommendations are concerned, this is still an ongoing iterative process as we work with the DPW, with Brian and his team and Kristy and, and their team. But, um, we're looking at potentially having some targeted on-street restrictions, um, having implemented residential permits, also looking at the, the ULDC, the code review and possible revision and of course, um, increase in enforcement. But I know that sometimes we are stymied by, um, resources that are available. So what I'm showing you here is just an example of what we found as we went into the field. Um, these are areas where you have single-family homes and certainly there was not, um, a lot of parking occurring, um, even though this is daytime when demand isn't high. But we found that, um, the, the demand during the daytime and also nighttime was not high. Um, as we moved to areas which were now closer to multifamily dwelling, then you started seeing, um, an uptick in the parking demand vis a vis supply. And so, um, it pointed out to, to a trend, to a pattern that was happening there. And then when you get to areas like along Main Street, um, where you have a lot of commercial, um, businesses and so forth, um, you found more restrictions, permitted parking, which is not surprising, um, for a corridor of that nature. But overall, what I'm showing here is just a, a segment of a summary that we've put together which shows the findings of, of our parking or on-street parking, uh, assessment. And just to give you an idea of what's being shown here, um, you're seeing Fourth Street and it's between Green Mill, Green Hill Avenue and, and Gorman Avenue. And we performed surveys, two surveys. So, um, if you were to look to the top left-hand corner, you'd see thirteen slash twelve. Um, those are the results of the two, um, demand readings or measurements that we took. And in the square brackets, that's the, the supply or the inventory, um, or the capacity, I should say, of the street. So you can see with that area, the first, um, survey we did, there, we, we found there was a demand, thirteen vehicles there and it occupied all the spaces. And the second survey, there were twelve vehicles, um, occupying an area slated for thirteen, um, vehicle. So that's really how we approached the on-street parking. And similarly with off-street parking, we had, uh, an exercise that even though we did not have hotspots, we looked at some of the, the zones within the code and identified some areas based on land use, some commercial areas as well as some residential areas. And that's how we also looked at the parking inventory and usage. So we looked at public and institutional areas, commercial and retail hotel areas, and we also looked at multifamily, um, residences. And we went through the same exercise. We identified fourteen candidate sites, again, understanding that there's an interplay between off-street parking and on-street parking. And that's, that really guided how we selected these, um, off-street parking sites. So we performed a survey again, looking at the peak demand periods, um, with the public and institutional, um, sites. It was a daytime, um, from ten AM to three PM survey. And then with the multifamily dwellings, um, it was, it ran from twelve AM, early morning to five AM. Um, there were low occupancies for some of these commercial off-street, um, parking areas. Um, but we also did not find any evidence of illegal parking. Um, so again, we are looking at some potential recommendations for targeted, um, street restrictions, a, a review of the code just to make sure that, um, what the city requires from developers is adequate, um, to meet, um, the, the, the needs for the, the tenants. Um, the tables here really summarize, um, what the occupancy levels are. And you know, you can see for the residential sites, it, it ranges from even as low as sixty-three percent and up to seventy-seven, seventy-eight percent. So it shows that some of these, um, sites, um, they're, they're quite occupied, but there's still excess, um, capacity there. Similarly, for the residential sites or, or the commercial sites, I should say, we, we summarized it, um, in that way. Um, now, when, when we get to an issue of safety and start looking at speeding hotspots, these hotspots were provided by the city and they really came from residents and also, um, business, um, personnel complaints that they're speeding along certain segments of roadway. And so all in all, there were about twenty-two hotspot segments that were provided. And we're sure that this doesn't, um, constitute the entire universe of speeding location. So, um, we, we looked, we performed a review of these locations, um, initially a tabletop review and then a site review just to see what the condition was in the field, um, see if there was overgrowth there, to see if geometrically, um, intersections were skewed or if you had sight distance issues. Um, we worked with, um, DPW and also the state of Maryland, um, for gateway locations along, um, state-maintained roadways to get crash data so we could understand what the crash experience was at these locations and also the crash patterns. And from that, we determined certain segments that we would perform or speed readings and volume counts in order to perform a meaningful assessment. And so, having done that, what I'm showing here are some segments that, um, the speeds were in what we call the eighty-fifth percentile speed, meaning that eighty-five percent of the roadway users were traveling at or below that speed or, or more direct, fifteen percent of the users were traveling, um, above the speed limit. And so this gives an example of a mitigation measure that we are recommending, um, with discussion with DPW to install, um, like raised crosswalk. Um, this segment is along Old Sandy Spring Road and, um, we're proposing a, a raised crosswalk at, um, Berry Leaf Drive. Raised crosswalks, they, they elevate pedestrians, make them more visible to, to motorists. And so, um, that in and of itself promotes, um, safety and also, um, harnesses speed to an extent. There are some, um, other mitigation measures, um, speed control measures that are already released. So what we're doing is really supplementing what's out there with advanced signing, um, with, um, increased or refreshing of the pavement markings, um, adding regulatory signs. So there is a, um, right turn, must turn at the intersection sign. So those are some of the measures and recommendations that we're proposing to the city. Um, here's another location along West Street and this is between Ninth Street and, and Park Avenue. And this segment had the highest, the second highest speeds, um, of our study. Um, and so we're recommending here is speed hump. Um, well, a couple of speed humps. And again, these are only recommendations. Naturally, they have to be vetted, um, by DPW and, you know, or, or working partners there. But, um, speed humps as opposed to speed bumps, which tend to be a more drastic rise, um, certainly have been proven, um, through studies, um, nationwide to reduce, um, um certainly have been proven um through studies um nationwide to reduce um speeds. They're very um effective in reducing speeds. And so along with some of the advanced warning signs, we think that this will help to curb curb driver behavior along these segments. Um another location here along Dorset Road where we have an elementary school. And we're really making sure that users of this roadway are acutely aware that it's a school zone and that pedestrians, students crossing these roadways will cross so via um these raised um crosswalks, which again um promotes visibility and helps um drivers slow um slow their speeds. So um that has to do with the roadway segment um hotspots. As far as intersection hotspots are concerned, there were not very many. But um our study expanded the hotspots to look at gateway locations coming into the city. And um as we looked at those, we certainly found uh over twenty other locations, and we're still in the process of getting um crash data from um the State Highway Administration, just to see what some of those crash patterns are. But we have identified some locations where certainly we can have some mitigation measures put in place through um flex posts, um delineators for positive tracking of vehicles. We also, again, we did not have a lot of crash data along city roadways, but from what crash data we had, um we found some collision types um where we had angled parking, parked um vehicles crashing with fixed objects or parked vehicles. And unfortunately, some of the patterns we saw um pointed towards maybe intoxication, maybe D U I. Um that was um a part of the assessment that we did. We also looked at crash patterns um and the lighting conditions, and we also looked at um surface conditions and that contributed to these um crashes. So overall, and we picked the segment of Montrose Road at Tenth Street where the there was an issue with this intersection. It certainly showed up on the hotspot list. And a a mitigation measure that we are proposing um for at least further discussion with D P W is um having a raised crosswalk right by Ward Street and then having advanced warning signs of pedestrian crossing and then having restricted parking along that segment. So overall, this is the direction that we're we're going. I did mention that um this is really a broad overlook. Um we certainly do not have time to go through everything that we did. But our analyses still continue, especially as they relate to some of the intersections and the gateway um location. So if I could, I'm going to make a quick switch just to another um slide that I'd love to show. Um we did a flyover of the area just to get a feel of traffic operations um within the city and along certain of these um hotspot locations. And this is a tool that we developed, which um it it fosters feedback um from stakeholders and especially residents. And it gives us a visual of how the areas that um we've identified, um how prevalent they are within the city. So the the blue lines show the city limits and the the red dotted line shows the focal area of our study. And um that's where we concentrated a lot of our efforts, but um we certainly took readings and measurements outside of this focal area. All of the the hotspots, including the off-street parking, are depicted here. But um just to give you an idea of the scope of the work, the hotspot for on-street parking is shown by the the green segments. All of these areas came back through citizen um feedback that there were issues in these areas. Similarly, well, for off-street parking, we selected some of these areas which were proximate to these on-street parking locations um for further assessment. Um the roadway segments are shown there in orange, and there are quite a bit of those. And then lastly, we have hotspot intersections, which are a combination of gateway locations as well as um hotspots identified through citizen feedback. I'll I'll just quickly go through um speeding segments are shown here, um Dorset Road. We have this one, which is an interesting one. Um this is a gateway location, um Maryland one ninety-eight at Irving Street. But as you look um along Irving Street, this is this is a a almost a candidate area for speeding, not excusing it, but it certainly comes out within the hotspots and through resident residents um complaints that this is an area um where there's speeding um issues and concerns. So um that was an an overall look at all the hotspots and the the um off-street parking. As we look at the on-street parking area, um what we're showing is some segments are some segments that emulate what I showed before. But from a visual standpoint, um whomever is using this, and hopefully, once we button this down, it will be available for public consumption. But it shows some of the key areas. Um this Fifth Street is is an area where there was just um a high demand um vis a vis the the supply there or the capacity. Um we had an area here, which is Park Avenue. From Ninth Street to Philip Powers Drive, um there is a multifamily, um our multifamily units up in this area. And so it it's no surprise that this becomes a parking hotspot area. Um Ashford Boulevard, again, we have um areas, a donor and some other apartment complexes in that area. And I could go on and on, but this gives you an idea of how pictorially we're showing um where some of the trouble spots are and then what we propose to do in terms of mitigation measures. Um as I as I close things out, um we talk about the hotspots for speeding. This emulates um some of the areas that we showed in the presentation itself and some of the the measures, the mitigation measures that we're proposing. And so when we show it in this way, concerned residents, concerned business leaders, um persons from within different um city organizations can really see what's happening, see where some of the trouble spots are, and then um have an idea of the mitigation measures that we are presenting, and then provide input and feedback for us to um finalize the report. So with that, I'd just like to turn back over to Brian and I'll take any questions that you have.
Thank you. Um Director Lee, do you have any more? You have anything else before I ask the council with their questions?
Uh no, I'm prepared to take any questions uh also that they may have. Uh that was the end of this particular part of our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh I'll go down the line. Uh Councilman DeWolfe.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Robinson. It was very educational. Do you evaluate, we have a development down at Patuxent Greens where there's uh two ways in and there's one and a half ways out. Uh my concern with that development is they're going to add uh another uh three hundred and eighty-nine, and they're looking to add sixty-one more units to that development. And we already have a huge development down there. Do you do any type of evaluations or uh as far as safety issues go in the event there's a emergency such as a flood, tornado, or anything like that, or fire to where they have, there has to be enough um access out of that development in order for our citizens that during an emergency would be safe? Do you do any type of work like that?
Okay, um I'll start and then hand over to Brian. Um that location that you you mentioned, I believe it was not included in the study because work is ongoing. But as far as evaluation, um or traffic evaluation tends to focus on that. Um we focus on access to these new developments, making sure that the access that is required or proposed by these developments do not have a deleterious effect on regular roadway traffic. So there's that component, and if we need to recommend, after performing a lot of times um simulation analyses, um if we need to implement, let's say, a traffic signal, for example, then we would inform um the developer accordingly. But what you're mentioning tends to fall under the banner of um, at least primarily under the banner of a regional protective action plan, where now you're looking at emergency situations, flooding and other types of emergency, which they're not totally divorced from traffic operation, because um you certainly have to allow um access and egress during these um incidents. But um our study was not um focused on that. It was not a part of the the scope of this work.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Sure, you're welcome.
Councilman DeWolfe, um Councilman Sidnor.
Uh thank you, Mr. Robinson. Thank you, Council President. My questions I will forward to uh the council clerk in reference to some streets that I didn't see on um the slide that I think need to be studied. I'm aware that you can't cover all the streets, but I think some streets that uh in this area or tier that need to be covered. And I will forward those questions to uh the city clerk, um for the Mr. Lee to take a look at as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Sidnor, Councilman Cole.
Uh my question would be, so this is preliminary findings. I like how user-friendly this is. It was very easy to understand. When do you anticipate the final results being ready?
Well, um we are still awaiting awaiting some um data from the State Highway Administration for those gateway locations, state-maintained roadways. And um so it's it's hard to say. Uh my original anticipation would be um four weeks, maybe four to eight weeks out, because um some analysis is still being done, and it cannot be buttoned down until we have the the additional data. And um just to give you an idea of what what we're doing, the 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 genesis of the study began with um residence complaints and, you know, their concerns being aired. So from our professional standpoint, um these gateway locations were even, let's say, at um Bowie Road and um Laurel Bowie Road, um where we know that the state has something planned there. Um we did traffic counts there, and we we are requesting um data, crash data as well. But but overall, what what I'm saying is that we need to perform, we, our plan is to look at operationally what's happening at these gateway locations. Um run some traffic operational analysis. We also want to look at micro mobility. Um we want to look at Peds. We want to look at vulnerable road users while we're doing that, so we can provide a comprehensive assessment um in the report.
Thank you. No further questions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Cole. And lastly, uh Councilman Mitchell.
Uh yes, uh so I I I understand that the the final copy, um you know, we don't know when that will be ready. My my question is, the presentation we started today, um are you able to forward that to us?
Brian, can you chime in on this?
Uh thank you. I'll coordinate that with the mayor and C A's office, and I'm I'm sure we will be sending out some information. This was initial to date. So we wanted you all to digest this. And yes, I'll I'll make sure that whatever comes to them comes to the C A's office on that.
Yes, no, I appreciated that. And, you know, even though the presentation was detailed, um you know, it it would it would behoove us to look at it on our own time as well. And the the other question was, um I, maybe he can clarify, but in in how many of those suggestions of hotspots uh getaway getaway areas, uh speeding zones, were there the suggestion, at least at this point in time, for uh speed cameras?
Uh from our standpoint, we know about the discussion of speed cameras. I can't speak directly from the suggestions that we got in here at D P W. Uh that was much discussion from the uh community on speed cameras. They just wanted us to actually mitigate the 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 problem with a variety of solutions. So they weren't specific to speed cameras. Uh Chris might be able to answer that more directly. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I I was just saying, because the the speed cameras was being uh offered, at least in in other conversations, as a method um to to control uh speed. And so in in the suggestions, I don't I don't remember many, many places, if any, where they were, where there were the expressed um suggestion of the speed camera in these areas. That that's why I was just curious.
From the technical expertise, I'll let Neil speak to that in the M U T C D.
All right, thank you, Brian. So the the challenge that we we found um with that is there is the the experience of residents of speeding along these roadways. But once we um perform the speed study, speed and and volume study along segments of these roadways. And and you can see that the segments um encompass several blocks. So we observed what is happening, and then we picked a representative block um where um speeding could potentially occur. But overall, our findings were that not very many areas had speeds which exceeded that eighty-fifth percentile um range, which is a a standard and and typical um speed metric that's used um in our industry, one. But then the speeds that we found um did not exceed the posted speed limit by very much. So you found that you may have instances, and and when we summarize the data and you see the report, you see just to what extent um the speed limits were um exceeded. So sometimes it may be two miles per hour, maybe five miles per hour, but we did not find a proliferation of um excessive speeds. So it then brings to to question um the the enforcement part of that, when you, when you start deploying um speed, speed cameras along these roadways. So um we certainly looked at some of what you could call some of the more traditional speed mitigation measures. We were not limiting ourselves to that. But um it certainly was a part of the toolkit, but for the areas that we we called out, we saw that the measures that I presented um could potentially um result in significant speed reductions along those segments.
Okay, I know. I I appreciate that, Mr. Robinson. And, you know, that that's good news. That that's good news from my perspective.
Council President Smith, can I make one more comment, please?
Uh Councilman DeWolfe.
Uh I too would agree with uh uh Councilmember Martin. When you see something in a in a presentation like this, you're only going to absorb between ten and fifteen percent of it without having it actually in front of you. And I can't see why that the council will not be afforded this study at these beginning stages. I know it's not completed, but it would get, at least give us a gist of what Mr. Robinson is trying to uh look at, what we need to look at, and what we need to convey to our constituents on this speed study, study itself. We're paying an awful lot of money for this speed study to just be blinded and only get one little presentation in this amount of time and not being able to have that information in front of us so that we can spend a necessary time in studying it. So I would agree with uh Councilmember Martin fully. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman DeWolfe. Um my questions were pretty much answered by the councilman that went before me. I want to thank you, um Mr. Robinson, for coming down and uh explaining this to us, or looking forward to the final product.
Okay, thank you.
Right, uh moving on to agenda item C. Ordinance number nineteen ninety-seven, an ordinance to amend the general operating budget and capital improvement program of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July first, two thousand twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and to provide an effective date. Director Saylor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our fifth amendment to the operating budget of this year. Um at this time, we are uh on the bottom of the first page, you can see some adjustments to the allocations of our ARPA funds. Um we have additions to the premium pay category, additions to the public health category, an addition to the economic impact category. Um and these came from the infrastructure and the administrative categories, which are at the top of page two. Um and these were for uh the public health was for additional um charges and fees for uh providing vaccinations and testing. Um we needed uh additional funds for our, the uh H VAC system um upgrade that's that is being uh planned. We needed additional funds for our, the HVAC system upgrade that is being planned. And then we had some business, businesses that applied for grants that didn't fall into the three categories for economic and community development, which are retention, recruitment and facade improvements. So we added funding to that grant program so that we could accommodate those businesses. Additionally, on page three, you'll see that I have taken some savings from the Office of the City Administrator, the Elections Budget, the Recycling Budget and the Streetlight Budget. And we're going to transfer those to the Capital Improvement Program to accommodate the purchase of all the toters necessary for the One and Done Program. So then you can see on page four, we also have an increase to the Goodie House Generator Budget. But then you'll see the total addition of two hundred thirty-six thousand ninety-eight dollars to the Environmental Program Project. This includes the hundred and twenty-four thousand ninety-eight dollars from the operating budget as well as a hundred and twelve thousand dollar grant that we've received toward that project. So that's a total overall increase of two hundred sixty-one thousand ninety-eight just in the Capital Improvement Program alone. There's no net increase or no, there's no net change to the general operating budget.
Thank you, Director Saylor. Any questions from the council? No? Well, if the council's agreement, introduction of first public hearing, the ordinance number nineteen ninety-seven at the Mayor and City Council Meeting on Monday, April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. All right, moving on to Agenda Item D, bid recommendation, refusing recycling container purchase. Michelle Blair, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilmembers and Mayor Mao. As presented in ordinance nineteen ninety-seven by Director Michelle Saylor, the One and Done Program has been fully funded under Environmental Programs Project in FY twenty-two CIP. So based on this ordinance, I am submitting a recommendation for the purchase of both trash and recycling carts for all single family and townhomes within the city limits. In addition to the carts, this purchase includes an inventory tracking system and the A and D provided by Ray Reg Pacific. This one-time purchase of the carts will support the One and Done Program and will be distributed citywide beginning April twenty-second if approved. So the recommendation is for the Mayor and City Council to approve the purchase. The total purchase for nine hundred fifty-one thousand one hundred and forty dollars. That's, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Blair. Do I have any questions from the council or comments?
I have a question on the tracking system.
Good, go ahead, Councilman Cole.
How does that tracking system work? Is that Bluetooth or radio code or is it just a program that we're going to use internally?
So it's, all the carts have our, have RFID programs and so we, the tracking system comes with handheld and then it's a web-based program that will have access to, to be able to track where the, where the carts are and to, as an inventory management program.
Thank you very much.
I have a question, President, as well.
Go ahead, Councilman Sidnor.
Yeah, Ms. Blair, how would this affect the condo community?
There would be no change to anyone, to any of our commercial or condo communities because they use corrals. So they would still have the ninety-five gallon that they, that they currently have and there wouldn't be any change at this time.
Okay. And my last question, I was reading this, he said that we're getting a grant, so the grant will offset some of that nine hundred thousand dollars, correct?
Correct. The grant is through the Recycling Partnership and that's a nationally recognized partnership. And they have, are helping us defray the cost of the purchase and also with our public outreach and education pieces.
Okay, this is my last question. Can you send me like an email with the community, this One and Done Program will be involved in as well?
Okay, it is, it is citywide.
Citywide, okay.
Yeah, it's citywide. All, all townhomes and single-family homes will be transitioned. They will, everyone will receive a brand-new trash and a brand-new recycling container. And the old recycling containers will be removed from the property and they will be recycled by Ray Ring. And the residents will have the option to also recycle their trash cans if they choose to. Or what we're suggesting is that they use that, those trash cans for their yard debris collection as opposed to, but having to go out and buy paper bags that they can use those containers and put in their, their lawn clippings and their, and their yard debris for collection.
Okay, thank you. I missed the citywide applause. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sidnor.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. Is there any more comments or questions from the council? All right, well, if the council's in agreement, move forward. This bid will be awarded at the Mayor and City Council Meeting on Monday, April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. Moving on to Agenda Item E, bid recommendation, generator purchase, Jude Mansion. Christina Cornwall, Emergency Manager, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, Mayor and City Council Members. Before you was a memo dated March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two recommending the approval of funds for the purchase of a generator for the Goodie Mansion at one three nine one zero Laurel Lakes Avenue. This facility houses administrative operations for the Department of Parks and Recreation and provides rental services. If a power outage would occur at this facility, this would require the administrative services to move to another facility and could lead to a potential loss of revenue for the city. The funds to purchase this generator is at fifty thousand five hundred and has been approved and programmed under the FY twenty-twenty-two CIP. Thank you for your time and consideration. This project is a joint effort between the Department of Park and Recreations and the Office of Emergency Management. And we'd love to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Cornwall. I'll entertain any questions or comments from the council? Questions, all right. Well, if the council's in agreement, bid will be awarded at the Mayor and City Council Meeting on Monday, April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. Moving on to Agenda Item F, Resolution Number two dash two-two, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel to create the City of Laurel Arts Council Fund. Director Barr, Deputy City Administrator, you have the floor.
Yes, good evening, Council President, Mayor and Councilmembers. Before you is Resolution Number two dash twenty-two. And this just approves the establishment of the policy and criteria used by the Laurel Arts Council for receiving and accounting of funding associated with public art projects and programs. You have any questions?
Questions or comments from the council?
Just a comment from me. I read this on Mr. Deputy Administrator Barr. I was just wondering why we just can't give them like a little budget of three thousand dollars or something. I know they purchased something, they got to submit a reimbursement receipt and they get reimbursed, but I was make the process faster for them by just giving them a budget. Just not a deal breaker, just idea.
Well, this policy actually just provides for that, they've established their purchasing policy and criteria for how their money is spent. It doesn't establish whether or not they have a budget or what monies, how they apply for monies. That, that makes sense?
I must have misread something. Okay, no problem. I reread it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. Any more comments from the council? All right, if the council's in agreement, introduction and first public hearing on this resolution will be at the Mayor and City Council Meeting on Monday, April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. Moving on to Agenda Item G, Resolution Number three dash two-two, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to establish the City of Laurel Pride Day Celebration Planning Committee. Councilman Cole, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I worked with the administration. I had an idea. A lot of constituents came to me saying that we needed a Laurel Pride. I wanted something that would be family-friendly, not some of the things that you see in the bigger cities. This resolution would establish the Pride Day during Pride History Month for LGBTQ plus community where we would celebrate past, present and future leaders from the City of Laurel and surrounding areas. This is a way for us to celebrate more inclusivity in our community. From what I can see in the community, this is a pretty large population that people don't necessarily know about. I'd be happy to have this committee formed so that we can bring another event to Laurel. Any questions?
All right, I'll take any questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, supported, Mr. Councilman Cole.
So if the council agrees, introduction and first public hearing on this resolution will be at the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. Thank you, Councilman Cole. Moving on to Agenda Item H. Ordinance number nineteen ninety-six, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to approve map amendment number nine two five to construct an additional sixty-one dwelling units at the properties known as Patuxent Greens located at one four four one five Greenview Drive, Laurel, Maryland, two zero seven zero eight, submitted by C S Patuxent Greens LLC and providing an effective date. Director Love, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, Mayor and City Council Members. Before you is ordinance number nineteen ninety-six, as required by the City of Laurel Code Providing Legislation. The applicant seeking a map amendment to construct additional sixty-one dwelling units to bring the total for the development to four hundred and fifty dwelling units in the Patuxent Greens Development. The original final site plan approval for three hundred eighty-nine dwelling units was approved in two thousand eighteen and is currently under construction. The western portion of the project, which is closest to the existing neighborhoods, will remain unchanged and only a portion of the eastern portion of the project will be revised. The proposed changes would encompass nine point four three acres of the property. The proposed densities and development standards are compatible with the existing development standards and densities governing the adjoining residential communities. The developable area will not increase from the proposed changes. The request does not reduce the amount of green space shown on the approved final site and landscape plan. Previously approved traffic study completed in two thousand seventeen was administered with the maximum amount of four hundred fifty dwelling units considered. The applicant has received conceptual approval from the State Highway Administration to add a left turn lane from Maryland one ninety-seven on to Greenview Drive to facilitate movements of right in, right out and left in at the intersection. Today, E C D staff has received one inquiry from a resident regarding the application. Information was provided to them. The resident did not give an opinion on the application. The applicant would be responsible to adhere to the following conditions. The applicant shall apply for and obtain preliminary subdivision plan revision approval from the City of Laurel Planning Commission. The applicant shall apply and obtain amended final site landscape plan approval from the City of Laurel Planning Commission and the applicant shall apply for and obtain final record plat for subdivision approval from the City of Laurel Planning Commission. The applicant's team will now make a presentation and will be available for questions afterwards. Thank you. Mr. Shep?
Thank you, Mr. Love. First, at the outset, if it's appropriate, Mr. Mayor, I want to say that I'm sorry to hear about the loss of your mother and our thoughts are certainly with you and your family on that. Just wanted to mention that at the outset. The, I want to thank Robert Love for his work on, on this application and his summary of the staff report. As he said, this is an existing project that everybody knows about as well under construction. What's a little unusual about this application is that we are here tonight to present at a work session the PUD Amendment to clarify the mix of units within the project. And I say clarified because the ordinance adopted by this council and mayor nineteen twenty-four, ordinance nineteen twenty-four already authorized up to four hundred and fifty units. We are simply proposing to change the mix of units within the project and to bring the total from the three eighty-nine that was originally submitted with the site plan and subdivision plan up to the four fifty. We are not seeking to raise the density cap established by the council and the mayor in their approval. What we would like to do is walk you through a slide presentation that hits on some of these points and then certainly we're here to answer any questions. I would say that there is a schedule, as you know, of additional public hearings. This is just the first step. There'll be a council public hearing on the eleventh. Presentation at a public meeting with the Planning Commission on the twelfth of April and then a second council hearing on the twenty-fifth. We are certainly prepared to provide information at those hearings in greater detail. And as Mr. Love described or set forth in the conditions and had recommended in his staff report, we would be required to come back for a subdivision plan and a site plan that would be specific to this revision of the, the area that will have the additional units and followed by a record plat. So there'll be many, many opportunities for further input by the community and review by staff. And we are certainly prepared to do all of that. I do have with us tonight, Mr. Cohen, who is the developer and owner of the project. I have with me from Rogers Engineering, Charlie Howe and also Christine Gillette, who are here to help me with the presentation. So I'm going to walk through the presentation. I know it's getting late, so I'll try to move through as quickly as we can and then certainly we'll be here to answer any questions. So with that, I want to go ahead and start with the presentation and Christine, if you could advance to the next slide. This is just a cover slide that we had used with the original presentation showing the themes of the community. Next slide. This was an artist's rendering of the entrance to the project as it will be developed and as it's built out. Next slide. As I mentioned, we had a planned unit development application that was approved in twenty eighteen that allowed up to four hundred and fifty units and then a preliminary plan and a final site plan that reflected the layout at three hundred and eighty-nine units, which was at that point the input that we had from the builder. They've since, from dealing in the, in the market with the strong response they've gotten from the community that is now residing at Patuxent Greens, that there was a desire to revise the mix. I should say that the additional units that we're proposing are all of the largest size of the townhouse product. Next slide, please. This is the original approved site landscape plan, which shows you reference points. You can see to the, to the left of the screen is the phase one of the project. I see the cursor going around and you can see shaded our labeling so the Patuxent Glen community and the villages of, have the greens of Patuxent, which is the condominium project up to the north. The proposal here, as you'll see in the next slide, really deals with just the, the very back phase, final phase of the project. Everything to the left of those stormwater management facilities, the ponds, the section that abuts the toxic lens and up to the section that abuts villages at the greens of Patuxent will remain the same, is not changing and is as originally reviewed and approved. But could you go back to the previous slide again, just to see the difference? So you can see exactly where the proposed change is. It's in that last section to the right of your screen and the cursor is showing it now. Advance this slide and you can see it there. It's important to note that we have not increased the development envelope and we are maintaining the green space and open space and environmental features that are being developed with the project. Next slide. So one of the things that had been So one of the things that, uh, had been raised at the initial meeting we have with the planning commission was concerned that this new section would somehow. Be, uh, more visible from the adjoining neighborhoods and we did a sightline study. Uh, that shows from the single family neighborhood here, uh, that there is a. A sightline drawn from really the area that is the closest to the Patuxent Greens project as a whole. And the top cross section at the top shows you that it's some, uh, two hundred and twenty feet from the existing residents to the. Phase one section of the project and that you would actually need to go and look through that product. That's already approved, the section that's approved and it's another five hundred and some feet, so a total of about seven hundred and thirty feet. Uh, from the existing neighboring, um. dwellings to the proposed new section at the closest point. So there, there, not only is there quite a distance, but there is, uh, green space and existing phase one. Development, uh, between us where we're talking about tonight and the existing neighborhood. Next slide, please. So this is the original bubble plan that was approved with the P U D application for, uh, ordinance number nineteen twenty-four, the original application in twenty eighteen. Uh, here you can see, uh, section G is really the area in general where we're talking about. And you'll see when we do a comparison that it is much larger, uh, in terms of the development envelope. Then, uh, what we're proposing with this, uh, additional revision. If we could look at the next. You can see there I N G is the area that we're talking about revising and it's actually smaller than what was shown on the. Uh, bubble plan for the P U T. Now, I should say that with the final site and landscape plan. That that development envelope is pretty close to what this one is showing, uh, but it's important as, as Mr. Love pointed out to say that. We are not decreasing the green area, uh, with this proposal. And if you could go back to the slide before, uh, you can see, uh, that section G, uh, really bubbles out. Uh, and that has been reduced with this proposal and that this, uh, chart that you see there is, uh, showing the different. Uh, sections of the project that add up to, uh, four hundred and fifty units max, which is the notation in the table there. And that's straight from the approval of the P U D amendment. There it says up to four hundred and fifty dwelling units max. Next, please. And we just looked at this, uh, it's very similar. Again, I'll just point out that the, uh, first phases of the project, which but the existing neighborhoods are not changing. Next, please. And the density analysis, so I'll show you what was done with the original application and, and where we stand. So, um, with the original site and landscape planet, uh, analysis with the three hundred and eighty-nine units. Uh, the density of the overall Patuxent Greens project, the whole project was, uh, two point oh three dwelling units per acre. Including all of the gross acreage of the tux and greens and that compares to four point nine six units per acre for tux and Glenn. And thirteen units per acre for the village of the greens of tuxed. Now, when we were dealing with the presentation of the proposal for the first, uh, final site and landscape plan. Uh, it was mentioned that, well, there's a, a large tract of area, which is conservation area on the other side of Bear Branch. You can see it there. It's about fifty-five acres. And so what would the density be if you didn't count that? Cause that's really, you know, not developable. It's a lot of environmentally sensitive area. So even though it's part of the gross tract area, uh, we did do a calculation based on the net acreage taking that out. And it was at two point eight four dwelling units per acre, still less than the adjoining. And then the next two slides will give you a comparison with the new proposal. So it's two point three four dwelling units. Uh, with counting the full property. And then if you go to the next slide, it's three point two eight. If you take out the fifty-five acres, still less than the adjoining neighborhood. Uh, to show that we are really, uh, compatible with the, uh, surrounding densities. And again. The physical relationship between us and the existing neighborhood. Isn't changing because the first couple phases of the project, the, to the left of the stormwater facilities are staying the same. It's just this little piece, uh, in the back. It's about ninety. Uh, next slide. So traffic improvements is an important part of any, uh, project. Next slide. When we went through our subdivision process, uh, we did look at the internal circulation. Uh, there was a discussion about that, uh, earlier in the agenda. It was looked at very closely at, at the planning commission level and we did make design changes, working with your staff. Uh, to create several areas where bottlenecks would be avoided and could be avoided in case of an issue. Uh, we will go through that same analysis if we're fortunate enough to be able to move forward with this application. When we go to the subdivision stage and the site plan stage, I think that was really drilled down in the site plan review, but we will work closely with your. Department of Public Works on that issue, um, because I know it was a particular concern. We are, um. Also including a roundabout at the site entrance, which should improve, um. Circulation right at the entrance, not only to our project, but to the connections, uh, to the single family neighborhood and beyond. Uh, we will put that in at a time when the, the site construction, um, is winding down because. Uh, and we'll work with your department of public works on timing of that, but you don't want to put in. Road improvements like that while the trucks are still doing construction work in, and with damage, the, the circle. Uh, there is a new dedicated left turn signal and, and I think what that is really described as is improving the phasing of that traffic signal. To make sure that the left turn from one ninety-seven into clubhouse, uh, can navigate safely. With a longer dedicated green arrow, uh, we are undertaking to. A design and permit that with the state now and will, uh, work with your public works department on that installation. Uh, additionally, it was discussed by Mr. Love that, uh, we have discussed with state highways about the. Uh, possibility of making an even further operational improvement. It's not an adequate public facilities improvement because. The original application, I should mention, uh, was evaluated and approved based upon four hundred and fifty units. So the traffic study that was done for the original project included four hundred units, even though we were ultimately. Uh, applied for and approved for three eighty-nine. The, uh, new improvement would include a left turn movement in from one ninety-seven into Greenview Drive, which would give an additional option for folks. Uh, wanting to get into this, uh, section of the community of Laurel, not just, uh, Patuxent Greens, but the existing neighborhoods. And you could see it drawn conceptually here, uh, so there would be an option for a right turn in, a right turn out and then a left turn in. Currently, right now, there's a median there, uh, that does not allow that turn. It would be phased with the, um. Well, the, the phasing of the traffic light at clubhouse would provide the gaps to make sure it is a safe. Um, movement and we have, uh, preliminary conceptual approval in a letter that was provided by state highways. And was provided, uh, to your staff and it should be in your backup and was submitted with this application. We would need to fully design it and implement it as part of the preliminary plan review, uh, as we move forward. But I wanted to make sure we noticed or, or noted that there would be additional traffic improvements in circulation. Uh, with this, uh, amendment. Next slide. We are maintaining the green space and storm water management. Uh, prior to the construction of the Patuxent Greens project, the. Prior golf course ponds were not storm water management facilities. They were just ponds and they overflowed and created a lot of, um. Of flooding, which, uh, that, that was not as much of an issue for a golf course, but had none of the storm water mansion in that hurry was being managed. We have converted all of these ponds and facilities to county permitted, uh, storm water management facilities. Uh, we are maintaining, uh, the fifty-five acres of forested land, which we referenced before. Forty-eight acres of natural regeneration of, uh. Green space and twenty-seven acres of interior green space. That's about a hundred thirty acres of green space of the hundred ninety-two acre site. The site is, um, already taking shape in, in this regard. You can see the stormwater ponds now becoming an amenity. For the community, um, and with retrofitting of the existing pond, three new bio retention facilities. A submerged, uh, system of, uh, gravel wetlands and a very, very large compensatory storage area, which helps, um. Control and collect, uh, water before it gets into the Patuxent basin. These systems have all been reviewed by your staff, by the county staff, or what they review by. Uh, Soil Conservation District, by M D E and others, uh, to make sure that we have complied with all, uh. Regulatory environmental requirements. None of this, um, environmental improvements to the site. None of these improvements, uh, will be compromised or removed by this proposed amendment. Next. So we have some, uh, drone flown photographs of the actual project as it exists now. The community is coming. Together, there's a number of sales there with, with folks residing. You can see some areas are greening up. Of course, uh. Other areas are still under construction and will green up, uh, further. And you can see in the back there, the very large compensatory storage. Area which provides a, uh, water amenity, uh, as well as the stormwater management, uh, facilities, the pond. Uh, it has the main feature as you come into the community, uh, now, uh, functions as a, as a fully. Uh, developed stormwater management facility to control the runoff, not from this project necessarily, but from the adjoining neighborhood. It picks up the stormwater management for this greater area, which is a very positive, um, improvement to the, to the area in terms of stormwater management. Uh, I think we have one more slide. This is a close up of one of the sections, uh, that is further along and has people, uh, actually residing there. Uh, we've got very strong, uh, responses from the community in terms of people wanting to move to Patuxent Greens and. The builders very pleased to be in Laurel and, and, uh, at Patuxent Greens. Next slide. Here are some slides of actual product, uh, that's being built out there. That's one of the singles. Next, and as the townhouses. Lots of bricks, brick and ornamentation. Um, the new product was, is going to be. Uh, one of the model types that's already provided within the choices at, at tux and greens. So. Uh, it will be very compatible with the community that's being built now. Next slide. So those are all the slides. I do want to add that, um, you know, I, I noticed that. The parking discussion in the presentation you had earlier, um, we have in this new section. Accommodated, uh, forty-three guest spaces and including in over and above the parking required, uh, for the units. And so we are, are mindful of parking and, uh, continuing to do that with this new proposal. And as I said, these are the largest townhouse products. They are very popular in the market. Uh, and we think they're being located within the site in an area that will not, uh, be, uh, visually impacting, uh, the. Existing situation as approved, uh, between the existing neighborhood and the first basis of the project. Uh, we are very anxious to move forward with this. Like I said, the original approval. Already allowed up to four fifty, but since we're seeking to amend our site and landscape plan. It was, um, required by your ordinance that we come back and discuss this proposal to add sixty-one units. Uh, to the approved site and landscape plan, but not exceeding the density cap established by, uh. The original putt approval. So with that, I am anxious and certainly willing to, um, and my team is here, uh, we're willing to. Answer any questions and certainly we'll be back at public hearing process, um, uh, to provide additional testimony and information. Thank you very much.
I'll move on with questions to discussion, uh, start with, uh, Councilman Zidnor. Any questions or comments?
No questions.
Councilman DeWalt?
Couple of questions, um. You stated the largest sized townhouses. Uh, what's the difference between the ones you just built? And the largest sized townhouses? What does that mean?
We have twenty-foot, uh, townhouses and twenty-two foot wide townhouses, Mr. DeWalt and, uh, councilman, uh, these will all be the twenty-two foot wide. And so they're the larger.
Between the two. Other than the two feet.
Oh, the square footage differences?
What's the, how many bedrooms? How high is it going to be? Things like that. Is it going to be bigger, higher, more bedrooms?
Um, perhaps Mr. Cohen can answer some questions on the, on the product. If not, councilman, we can certainly bring that back to the public hearing. But it will not be a taller unit, uh, just has additional square footage. But Alan, do you have any specific information on the square footages?
Um, yes, good, good evening, um, everybody. The, uh, so we have two products. You have the twenty-foot Ryan product. Uh, which is twenty feet by forty-five feet deep. And then we have the N V product, which is twenty-two by a, a little shy of fifty-five feet deep. So. Uh, they're exactly the same height, uh, the difference is in the depth and the difference is in the width, uh, the, the products that I'm proposing to build on the back. Are all of the twenty-two foot products. Um, we will not be building any more twenty-foot products. The only ones that are being built, they're what's approved in phase one through four. So the back portion will be the twenty-two foot products.
Uh, okay. What's the difference between the twenty feet by forty-five feet? And the twenty-two feet by fifty-five feet? What's the selling price of the twenty by forty-five and the twenty?
Uh, so, uh, so, um, Councilman DeWalt, the twenties are starting in the, uh, mid to low fours. And the twenty-twos are in the, uh, starting in the fives to five thirty. Thousand. The square footage, um, with, with all the bells and whistles is about six hundred square foot difference between the two products, living space.
So the advantage of adding these sixty-one is based on the amount of money that, uh, is going to be made from the sell of these, uh, units, correct?
Well, I don't sell the houses. I just developed.
And I'm just saying, i- it's, it's obvious that that's the difference because the prices are going to be, um, uh, about a hundred thousand dollars more.
Well, that's what, it's, it's what the community and what, uh, the buyers wants in this market where interest rates are, even though they've ticked up a little bit. They are, we are seeing, um, a much stronger, uh, sales point at the twenty-two foot townhouses. Um, as it stands right now, um, phases one through four, we're pretty much out of the twenty-two foot, uh, townhouses at this time.
The, Mr. Councilman DeWalt, I would add that the, there is a higher seller price for the twenty-two footers, but that also may still be a higher tax base to the city on that.
Okay, the. The left turn lane coming southbound on one ninety-seven into Greenview. Uh, that just enables vehicles to make a left turn from, uh, on one ninety-seven. So they'll fill in that big, uh, golly median just so they could get into the complex. If we have an emergency, a flood emergency where the, uh, stream or creek down by. Uh, Morris Drive down by the entrance to Home Depot. There's a light there. There's also a light a little further down at one ninety-eight. The stream actually comes about a hundred feet before Morris Drive. That stream several years ago, we got so much water up by the bowling outing and you can look on the city website, you'll see the flooding. That occurred from that stream next to the, uh, used to be a bowl and now it's still there. It, it was hitting bridge going over there so hard. It was, uh, going about a fifteen, twenty feet in the air. It's the craziest looking, um, video you've ever seen. It's on the city website. Now that's the same stream or creek that's going to be coming down along one ninety-seven before the traffic light. So in an emergency, if anybody goes, comes out of Greenview Drive and heads northbound on one ninety-seven. That stream will be, if, if it floods over there, it will be filled and they will have no place to go. And you're looking at an additional sixty-one units. I'm going to get. And you're looking at an additional sixty one units, I'm going to get all the figures for Monday's meeting. Of the different developments that are already there, Patuxent Glen, the village at the Greens of Patuxent, Spring House Apartments. And then we have two more developments coming in at at the Lakeview Greens, which is the two five story high rises. That are going to be part residential, part business and part commercial. And all those cars, all those cars in the event of an emergency are going to have to come out either Clubhouse Boulevard. They could get out Greenview only if that stream does not flood. But if it's a flood, there's a good chance that's what happened years ago, that's going to flood. So the only way to get out of that, that whole development of all those cars. Is going to be to get out Clubhouse Boulevard without putting a dedicated access street somewhere there, and I know the studies have already been been done. Because you keep mentioning that fifty five percent forest land, which you already said, there's going to be nothing there, it's a swamp, it's a forest, it's a swamp. Nothing could, you can't possibly build anything there, so I don't even know why you put it into your equation anymore, but you can't go through there, you can't go by Home Depot. You can't go by the driving range out there to get on one ninety seven or one ninety eight, there's no place to go for these cars and you get one. Or two cars during an emergency inside that development, you get one or two that cause an accident. That stall because of maybe high waters that stop, it's going to back up the rest of the traffic there. And it's going to be a nightmare and you've you've already had the planning commission, several members of the planning commission have already said you need another route. In and out of that development in order to fully protect the safety arc constituents that are living there. And I'll have those, I'll have those. Stats for you on Monday night's meeting and I'll tell you how many cars are going to be trying to get out of that development total. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman DeWalt, Councilman Cole, any comments or questions?
I do have a few, I know that the stormwater area is not changing, I appreciate seeing that. But it did look like on the new plans that the impervious surface of the townhomes themselves are is going to be increasing more sidewalks, more roof. Compared to what was previously proposed.
Actually, Councilman, the townhouse product has a smaller footprint than the. Single family product and therefore, although you know, you certainly have yards with single families, which is not impervious. But since they're spread out more, you have more street and more sidewalk, so. I think it's a good question and I think it's something that we can look at to try to get you some more information on, but. In general, what I've been told is that going to a envelope with the townhouses actually decreases. Some of that impervious surface, it also shortens some of the development time because the. Grading required for the pads for townhouses is less than what's required for the single family, but I appreciate your question and we will look at that further.
Okay, if you if you could get us that data, that would be great, and then my last question, just seeing the presentation about the density, I really liked that. But I did notice that in that density calculation, that stormwater basin is still included. Just out of curiosity to see how it would fit in with the other communities that don't have that large stormwater basin, what would the density be with just the residential area be?
Well, the the density calculations were done in accordance with the the zoning ordinance in terms of what you do on that track, but. We could, we could look at that, I mean.
Oh, yeah. I'm not. That was legal, I just was wondering if it would.
Yeah.
Feel compared to those other communities that are around there.
Yeah, I appreciate the question, I do think it's a. It is a trade off because you know, this community is almost starting to look like a. Community with a water feature theme to it because it has so many stormwater facilities, they're really ponds, they're not stormwater facilities. They function as that, so you know, we we certainly don't want to be penalized for including. Environmental features, but I appreciate the comment and we'll look at at that as well.
Thank you. No further questions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Cole, and lastly, Councilman Mitchell, you have any comments or questions?
No, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. Well, this council's in agreement introduction of the first public hearing at the mayor and city council meeting on Monday, April eleventh, two thousand twenty two at six P M. Agenda item I Charter Resolution Number one seventy five, a charter resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland. To amend Article three hundred of the Charter of the City of Laurel entitled Government by amending Section three one one. Salary of council members to provide the method of calculation for in the timing of any salary adjustments for the city council members. Mayor Moore, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, if you're okay, my comments will really address Charter Resolution one seventy five and. Charter Resolution one seventy six, which is seventy five is with the city council. Seventy six is for the mayor, roughly back around, or prior to twenty fifteen. There was a process set up that. Required the mayor to appoint a committee, citizens committee to look at salaries of the mayor's city council. As well as look at all the expenses from the council and make recommendations, so. They would make recommendations on the salary of the mayor and city council. And then expenses for those officials as well. It was something that was done several times since I've been around, I think at times it can be confusing. And more importantly, I think you have to have people that constantly know. You know, what you're spending money on council and care for reimbursement or or pensions, conferences, those type of things. And as well as the salary, quite frankly, it became a political football because then. The council had to accept the report. What we did back roughly around twenty fifteen, I think it was, which. I think it's either green, I think it was either Gaithersburg or Rockville or one of those. We had run across the process that they were using at the time. To do an automatic adjustment to salaries. And then the expenses of the mayor council conferences and all those things would be done through the budget process. Which are pretty much already is how we've been operating, the. The changes were made, the problem was there was some mistakes in the changes and. What happened within twenty fifteen, they were supposed to, I don't know if it didn't get bracketed or what. But it's really designed to to provide a increase. If needed every four years, so it wouldn't be done every year, council. Current sitting council members and the mayor do not vote on their own salaries. It was, it would be. Placed in in the budget the upcoming year after that election, it would go to whoever the mayor and city council were for those. In those positions. It really got confusing, we did make some adjustments at one time and pretty much we stopped it until such time as we felt. We could try to come up with a reasonable way to make sure that the elected officials were being compensated and also quite frankly. To make sure that those individuals that are interested in running for mayor council, but also. You know, not take a beating, quite frankly, most could go out, get a job, could get a. A part time job or whatever they may want to do, but this was the way we thought we could keep capable people running and do. Be compensated in the proper way. So what, what this does is allow for that automatic every four years. It allows to whatever the employees are getting, the. Council members would would get the incoming new members would get and it just is a little bit easier, I think, for budgeting and for. Making sure that those that are running for office or those that are in office running. Know, run for reelection, know what that salary increase may be, if anything. And you notice we also back in twenty fifteen allowed for elected officials to be. To get in on the insurance, they pay the same same rate, that was basically a recommendation from citizens committee. We put together several years ago. On incentives to get people to run, so it's the same process and there's also a statement in there that. Allows for a council member or a mayor to not accept anything at all, so that's in there as well and. That's kind of outlines both for the mayor and for council members and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, thank you, Mr. President.
I'll go down the list and I'll start with Councilman Sidnor.
I thank Council President, once again, Mayor Moore, I pay my condolences to you and your family and time and grief. Just, yeah, this is like a. A tough thing right here because you know, I can't speak for all the councilmen, but I know we don't do this for the money, but you know. There is some compensation here and then the language like the mayor said states one thing and. It's not being enforced that way that it states, and so that's the dilemma that I have and. So I'll just talk about it a little bit, what brought my to my attention is, I just tell you, in two thousand and six. The council received a raise from four thousand dollars, seventy five hundred dollars. And so when I came on the council in two thousand and seventeen, the council was making seventy five hundred dollars. And we brought this to my attention, at the end of the year, we got to file our taxes and I noticed that my W two's was. I went to Kim Ross, I said, Kim, I got a raise or something, I ain't know I got a raise, and she said, well, you guys get additional five hundred dollars every year. Or market adjustment, whatever come first, I said, okay, cool. And next year, same pay salary. Eighty three fifty seven, two thousand and eighteen, eighty three fifty seven, two thousand and nineteen. Nine thousand, two thousand and twenty, seventy six hundred in two thousand and twenty one. So the, I had these conversations with the mayor and his staff, so I try to always have a conversation with the manager staff before I talk on public record about these things. And so the mayor said he was going to bring these changes and he said, he told me that was a mistake, they. They shouldn't have happened that way, but the ordinance was signed like the mayor said, was signed in October fifteenth, two thousand and four to go into effect. After the November fifteenth, two thousand election and the language, as you see, the new language that was written there said every July first, the council receive a five hundred dollar raise. Or market adjustment increase, whichever one's less is the less than five hundred, the market just less than five hundred dollars, we get that and so. I guess that's not a a lot of money, the way that I interpret it, you know, that every council member come in at seventy five hundred dollars. July the first, that when the budget come out, that council member will get. You know, whatever this it is, a five hundred dollar raise or a market adjustment. It's so the new election come in twenty twenty three, that councilman come in, the way that I interpret this, that councilman will still come in at seventy five hundred dollars. And here, according to this language that's written now, that, you know. So that's my dilemma with it, like I said, the man and I, we talked privately about it, Turk and I talked privately about it as well and. I just don't see. I don't see a big difference in the salary if that if we keep the current language we have right now. So that's, I recommend we keep the current language. Thank you.
I could make one comment, the problem you have with the current language is, and that's the problem of saying that you it was, you don't get five hundred dollars every year. That's that's just the bottom line, because you'd be giving yourself raises, but more importantly, it also stipulates in. In both of them, that it has to be voted on by the public. And there's no way that you can get a raise when there's not an election year, even at the council level, without going to the individual. People for a vote on that, that's why I'm saying the language is very, I I don't know what happened. But it's it's all over the, there's bits and pieces of everything that we were doing and this is one way to 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 clean that up in my view. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman DeWalt.
No question.
Councilman Cole.
No questions, I like that this consolidates everything and makes it even for everybody, puts it all in one spot.
Councilman Mitchell.
I don't have any questions, I I would keep it as it is now and I I don't, I don't understand how it could be, I guess, so confusing for for five individuals. So, yeah, that that's all I have.
If I could, it's not about the five individuals, it's about what the charter says. That's where it's it's got many different pieces in there, again, if you want to keep its language. There still needs to be cleaned up somehow because it has to be voted on by the residents for these to take effect.
All right, well. I'll just table it for now. And we can keep it as is for now, we can table and if we come up with something better later. And have a discussion later, then we can take that approach. All right.
Mr. President, I do want to make it clear that I've instructed the budget director. Not to do anything until we clean this up, other than to give what the mayor and city council required to do and receive. So until you fix that piece on whether it has to go to the the residents for a vote, that's an issue, that will be a concern. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, like I say, it's it's really confusing because. I hear what the mayor's saying, you know, but. I probably just, we probably just, like you said, need to table and have a a conversation with the city solicitor. And get down to this, that way we'll take up the people's time, arguing on what the people think that we are arguing over salary, but. Language is something that's written, we're supposed to follow and we're not following it, it's problematic on both parts, so. I disagree with table, talk to this solicitor, have a special meeting or something, find closed doors and air this out and then come back.
If this, just so you're aware, this was drafted by the city solicitor as well. This new language.
That's fine, we're going to table it and. So that would take part of the next part of the agenda anyway, so that's, oh, honestly, an all in one. So there being no further business to come before the mayor and city council tonight, this work session is adjourned.